Please read your agenda. Please read your agenda.
I am not allowed in.
Are you telling me I can't attend a public meeting?
Yes.
You are telling me...
You need to notify us in advance.
I don't need to notify you for attending...
Why is there a camera?
Because I'm filming the meeting.
No.
Yes, yes.
You are not.
Would you care... You're a clerk, yes? Would you like to contact Calc and speak with Calc?
I just don't see what you're saying.
Aren't you gaining from this?
This is a public meeting. If you would care to read...
Excuse me, excuse me.
Yes.
Where are you from?
It doesn't matter where I'm from. It doesn't matter whether I'm from the King of Sheba. I am allowed to attend a public meeting. Yes, yes, all across the county. Because I want to attend... Is it a public right under the Localism Act? Yes, it is for council meetings. It's for council meetings. Right, you've got a clerk that can contact Calc and ask them.
We've also got a clerk who can cancel this meeting.
Well, if you're going to cancel a meeting because you don't want the public to be in attendance at a meeting...
You're not public as far as we're concerned. You're from a different constituency altogether. You're from Furness and Westmoreland. What has this all got to do with you?
This has absolutely...
What has all this got to do with you?
Because I'm a member of the public.
Because you've got a grievance against this council because we didn't renew your contract.
Nothing to do with...
Yes, it is. And everybody in this town knows that.
Right, are you speaking to me now as the mayor and the chair of this council?
I am. You've got a grievance against this council because we did not renew your contract. Not as you put on Facebook that you left us.
Well, actually, the clerk had an email that I had done that. Not why I'm attending. Please don't start because you're digging a deep enough hole as it is. Right now, this is a public... This, 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 this is a public meeting that anybody can attend.
But also, also, as the chair of this meeting, I can ask you to leave.
Only if I'm causing a disturbance, which I was...
You are causing the biggest disturbance I've ever seen in my life.
Firstly, the meeting hasn't started. The meeting starts at 6pm if I'm not mistaken. And just for fact, it says...
And 10 seconds past, 10 seconds past 6, I'll ask you to leave.
But you'll have to give grounds because otherwise the monitoring officer will be down under. If I'm s... Excuse me, if I'm sitting, observing a meeting, not saying a word, I'm not disturbing a meeting. Am I? Sorry?
You are resident of the town.
It doesn't matter for a public meeting. It does not matter for a public meeting. Right, would you... In that case, if you're preventing me from attending a public meeting, I will call the police.
It isn't a public meeting.
Yes, it is a public... Yes. All council meetings, unless it's an Agenda Part II item, is a public meeting. Doesn't matter one O or two.
Do you know that chap? Who's that? It's Mr Davis from Plymouth. We're telling him the video, the video. Hey, look, get out of here, for yourself. Just go. I'll let him sit there with the council people. Of course, you know.
Good afternoon. My name's Jonathan Davis. I'm trying to attend a public meeting of the Sperry Town Council, but the... It's a public meeting, but the council members and the clerk are refusing me at entrance to the public meeting. It's a criminal offence of them to do so because it's set out in legislation for public attendance. Sorry? Well, it's a cr... Yeah, I mean, it's an... For them to actually block access to a public meeting, yeah. It's the Sperry Town Council meeting. Basically, they don't feel it's a public meeting and shouldn't be accessible to people.
We don't want videoed, that's what we said. We don't want recorded.
You don't want them in. Go on, off and we should tell them what you're saying.
Well, yeah. Yeah, which it has sort of been... But public notice is up for the meeting, which makes it a public meeting. Yeah, we don't need to give you notice.
Yes, you do for public participation.
I'm not participating. I'm sitting as a member of the public. You are the clerk. You have training, I take it, on this.
Yes, I have a training.
Yeah. They just don't want me here. No, that's literally the grounds. That's the grounds they don't want me here, which they're not entitled to do. They haven't given grounds. They're just asking me to leave.
I have no grounds, pal. Putting things on Facebook, the Sperry Town, the Sperry Town...
Um, well, no, they can't... I mean, literally, they've had... Basically, the council's not got any members nominated for the elections. I put a comment about that in the past on Facebook.
Tell the police to come out of this. They don't want us in the house.
Um, there isn't other members of the public at the moment, no. Although I can quite understand why with the reception. Right. Well, I'm going to take a seat in the meeting and I'm going to observe the meeting. It may well be... Um, sorry, the venue name is...
Sorry?
The venue name of the meeting is the Sperry Methodist Church. Yeah, yeah. That's correct, yeah, yeah.
I want to ask my simple question, Mr Davis.
I'm just on the phone.
Yes, I realise that, but I'm going to try to ask a question.
It is, yeah, yeah. It is, it is... But no, I mean, I'm literally observing the meeting. It's a public meeting that anybody can observe a meeting unless it's a Part II Agenda item. No, 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 it's the full agenda of the meeting. No, just myself because it's only me here as a member of the public.
Get away the pen, if you can watch the sitting meeting. Get away back the pen and the sitting there. What are you going to do with the other? Back off, and then back off immediately. So purpose, you don't cause embarrassment. That's the only reason he's here. He's not welcome. He's putting a lot of lies. He said a lot of lies. And one thing, that he was pleased that he backed in when we...
Right, well, yeah, well, as I say, I'm going to take a s... Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, sure. Yeah, yeah, just a general meeting of the council, yeah. No, no, yeah, no, just the general meetings, yeah. I'll take a seat so I'm not causing a disturbance to the meeting. Okay, thank you, bye bye.
If you were to look at the council, no, sorry, not this council, but this and the first council has had this occur. This our first meeting, we haven't had meetings since because we've had a number of our staff of ill, okay? So not really been in a group to be able to resolve the issue. And I think tonight would have been an appropriate time for us to get together and try and sort out this problem. We do not need someone like yourself or others who have, I don't know what your agenda is, to be honest. And I don't know what it is.
I don't have an agenda.
You have an opinion to have an agenda, even if you don't let me finish. You had your say, I'm having mine on behalf of my colleagues.
Not had any say, but yeah.
And I think when I rinse stuff on your comments, all right, you have an opinion. But I wonder what is the reason for that opinion? The reason, nobody gets on face sake, as I call it, to give opinions unless they have something hidden away. What have you got against this particular group of people?
I don't...
Because now you do, you're denying it.
Right, you can let... You've had your say. Listen, I don't want to disturb any meeting because I know you just started the session.
You had your say on the board. Actually, you know, we have a reason. And I think that need a fair pack of ribbons sorted out, okay? And can we have that without any interruption, any comments or derogatory or derogation for you or for anyone else in this room, okay? Can we try and conduct it in an orderly and civil manner to try and resolve this issue, okay? And you've had your say, I've had my say, we're going to carry on with the meeting. You will be able to speak for a period of five minutes tops.
I don't want to speak. I'm not here to speak. I'm not here to speak.
No, you have to listen. I'm finishing. I'm saying you, if you wish to speak, will have five minutes to say your case, should you wish to do so, okay?
Yeah, I don't want to speak. I'm here to observe the meeting, end of.
Right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, Mr Davis. What's the purpose of the recording?
I'm recording it to put online.
Have you got permission?
Don't need it for a council meeting. You don't for...
I think it's because we've got a right to right over open.
Not as councillors, as a council, public council meeting.
Alan Kelly, he's recording, he's everybody. And he's here for one purpose, one for his book. He's verbally doing, he's trying his hardest on Facebook and that embarrasses his council. Now he brought a camera and himself for one purpose to try and embarrass the council. And we're here to try and put things right and he's here to disprove it. No other purpose, there's no other reason. He lives at Plymouth, there's no reason to be here. Public participation isn't part of the area. What public participation did he say? What's he brought a camera for the, for public participation? Why is he need a camera? He tried to embarrass, he's trying to embarrass the council. And he's tried it several times in the last one and he's here now with that. And now in front of the camera, his problem with him is that we got rid of him and cost him a lot of money. And that is the sole reason. We know he wasn't doing a good job, we've got shot him.
Alan, the reason we got rid of Mr Davis was for two reasons. One, the poor service he was giving. The staff was getting no response at all from him. And secondly, his attitude. Totally utterly not acceptable as this county doing money. His appearance tonight just proves what we've just said.
And no matter what he does and what he says, we'll take him back. Under no circumstances do we take him back.
And excuse me, you are sitting in the corner, smoking and shaking your head. He's taken part. Yes, he did. Yes, we're waiting for the police. We're going to have some to remove you. Are the police on the way, Mr Davis, as far as you know?
No, they weren't going to bother.
Oh, so what you're saying is it isn't the police matter?
No, the police just weren't going to be bothered unless something happened. Now, I'm sitting here to observe...
Well, something has happened, you've appeared to the meeting.
Yeah, which anybody could do at any meeting.
Why is your element?
Because I know the law, I know the legislation.
Oh, why are you using element to be here? Why, why don't you go to another council meeting?
I do, I do.
What you're saying, but could you not allow us to try and resolve the issue?
Any member of the public?
Yeah, can you allow the council to try and resolve this issue?
That's what I'm doing. I'm sitting here while you're obser... I'm literally not interfering in the meeting.
You don't, you don't seem to realise, I don't think that you're here. I feel with some sort of, what have you got against the Sperry in particular?
Nothing.
You do it, nobody goes to this length unless they've got someone to grant it to.
Up until recently, my party have councillors on this council until Mike left, so I'm well aware of what goes on here. I'm here to observe the meeting as a member of the public and to record it as the Localism Act affords the right.
I just can't believe that somebody would travel all this way for a purpose, just to view a meeting and not give some constructive...
Exactly.
Constructive to watch. And I don't understand why you'd like to do something like this instead of being a positive candidate.
What's the reason you're going before? What's the reason for this? For why?
Well, actually, it'll be used on Facebook and by the local press.
Well, I'm sitting there, it's six o'clock, you know about him, I think.
The meeting officially should have started seven minutes ago. And I'll be looking at you.
What's going on tonight? You all right?
Fine, thanks, yeah.
What's happening?
I'm just here to observe the meeting and record it.
Do you need to record it?
Yeah, I'm recording it.
I know you've said you are, but do you need to? Is there any reason why you have to?
No, I'm observing my right. I'm not interfering with the meeting. I'm letting you carry on, I'm sitting here quietly.
Yeah, what's your name?
My name's Jonathan Davis. As anybody in this room knows apparently.
Jonathan Davis?
Yeah.
And you work for...
Sorry?
Who do you work for?
Well, I'm actually the leader of Cumbria First.
What does that do?
It's a political party that up until recently, you had councillor on this council from that party.
Oh, right, who was that?
That was Mike.
Right, okay.
Can I ask, as a councillor, why you're writing my details down?
Because I want to know who I'm speaking to.
Yeah, well, why do you need to write them down?
Because I'm forgetful.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Anything happens, that's on film, you're writing my details down.
I wouldn't ever do that if I worked for Cumbria Police.
Yeah, that's fine. I've just actually phoned them actually.
Right, or did they say?
Well, they said because of the fact that nothing's happened at this moment in time, it's not something they can act on.
Okay.
But you should know as Cumbria Police, the public meetings are fully accessible and anybody can hold them there.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, it's never happened before at all.
Not here, no, but you have to cancel them.
Yeah, it's just never happened here, obviously. And obviously, we're going through a tricky time at the minute.
I'm well aware of that, yes, yeah.
Right, so it just seems a bit...
Well, anybody, anybody can attend a meeting.
Yeah, I know that.
They don't seem to understand that.
Right? That's why that's everybody. Yeah, you're entitled. It's just, obviously, tensions are high. Because we're going through a tricky situation and we're trying to rectify it with the help of the council. And we're just intimidating at all, as you can appreciate.
But it's a right under the Localism Act, 2011.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. Well, it's the type of way, so we can go on and do everything we need to do and then we can postpone everything else, all right? It's all right?
Yeah.
What, can I ask a quick question? I haven't prepared this council, this must help you, brother.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I apologize, to be honest.
The proposal put to the meeting that we abandon this meeting. Can we have a vote on that, please?
I'm, I'm, obviously, going to go with the majority, but the next meeting is in terms of as well. So unless you want to take any more kind of guidance than that, I'm happy to go with the majority. It's possible, it's public place, what you're doing like this, it just becomes public.
So if we have the next council meeting...
The next council, Cumbria, probably.
I'm getting it right, yeah. What I would like to warn things, because as somebody, there has been obviously discussions about elections and how it goes forward. If we just use that one item on the agenda...
Yeah, I agree with that.
Well, I think, I think... But that one item to see what's been occurring, what is, how it's going to resolve. Because I thought people had a bit of... To explain what we, what's actually been happening with the council.
Well, we do realise that we want to, and we thought we said it to the press.
Well, what we're doing is explaining what we've done so far.
You say the reason why we never come to the press in the past is because we didn't want to, wanted to resolve it without all the who. Of course, you can do that, it's theirs, obviously.
We've had a, we've had a letter, an email to our partner, a gentleman called Lee Jardine, senior specialist on elections. You can't really access the mail. He says, "We need to run a separate election for Sperry for our council." "With this, we publish a new notice of election and any interested candidates will need to complete and submit a nomination form to us." In other words, to the election people. "We also need to set an election date, which needs to be within 35 days of the 4th of May excluding on business days."
Yeah.
I don't know how I read that. Does that mean that it could be within 10 days after the 4th of May? Or it's got to be 35 days? I'm not quite sure if that means... Yes. He says, "If received more nominations than seats," and I want to remind the council, we have 15 seats. And I believe at present we have 11 councillors.
Barbara Dunson.
Barbara Dunson. Ten, okay. "If the number of nominations is the same or less than the number of seats, i.e. 15, those candidates are elected uncontested." And either way, I agree that is, that if all the present councillors fill those forms in and submit, submit them within, within the allotted time scale and no more than 15, that all the councillors who fill those in and possibly everyone who wish to do that, you would then be re-elected as councillors, okay? He says, "I will keep you up today, but in terms of running up the council, the implication of no councillors, I would speak to Calc." Kelly's doing that. Kelly, our clerk, is doing that, okay? How did this happen? Three reasons. We used to have a chap who looked after our website. He also owned the website. Because of the poor service we're getting from that particular chap, we did not decide to renew with our clerk and went with another provider. Because we went with another provider, we had, because we didn't own the website, we had to set up a new website and that was the deal. Which meant we had to have a new website address and also a new email address. The clerk who lived in Sperry moved house to another address within the Sperry area. The forms that were sent for the nominations were sent to the address that the clerk had left. And the clerk had told Allardale, had told Calc, had told the police and even got the post redirected from Ryan Mill to her new address. Those forms for the nominations were sent to the wrong address, which was a vacant property. And those forms must have laid there for at least as far as we know, up to 14 days without us knowing that they were there. Mr Jardine contacted our clerk at round about 2 o'clock on the final date of the nominations allowances, which finished at 4 o'clock that afternoon, two hours before. And he asked, and he believed there was no nominations from the Sperry. Okay? And we, at that time, there was no nominations because we got no forms to actually nominate anybody, okay? I believe Mr Jardine, maybe our clerk could inform us if this is correct. Mr Jardine said he tried to contact our clerk on several occasions and was never able to do so by telephone or by email. Yet, two hours before the cutoff point, somehow he managed to contact the clerk. The clerk contacted himself and out of respect for Mr Jardine, I phoned him back and it was 10 past 3 that afternoon. And he said that, as far as he knew, there was no nominations from Sperry. He said he couldn't comment until after 4 o'clock. I said, "Now, how do you know there's no nominations if you can't check it until after 4 o'clock?" And he just answered the question. He did promise, he fed Mr Jardine, he did promise that he would contact the clerk to tell us the way forward of what we could do to put this matter right. And we said, "I actually found it for that." Our clerk, albeit on the Saturday of Easter weekend, she sent an email to Mr Jardine asking, "Could we have a quick response?" Yes, it was Easter weekend and the email came back as our clerk fully appreciated it because it was out of office until Tuesday. And he was asked to give a quick response so we knew how to put this forward in the right manner. By the Wednesday, he hadn't contacted the clerk. The clerk contacted Mr Jardine's office and spoke to a lady, is that correct? And he was, she was told that Mr Jardine wasn't available to speak to. Our clerk responded that back to me and I said, "Well, we've got to move this matter forward because we know it's a situation that you've never had a visit and we want to put this matter right." And I thought, "How do we move this forward in the right manner?" I decided to phone Mark Jenkinson, our local manager. And a chap called Matthew came onto the phone and I asked who he was. And he said he represented Mr Jenkinson when Mr Jenkinson wasn't available. I said, "When is Mr Jenkinson available and how can I contact him?" This Matthew chap said to me, "He's down in London on our kitchen..." This Matthew chap said to me, he's down in London and has kitchen to business, and will not be contactable for the full week. And I said to this chap, Matthew, I'm not prepared to wait up to this time, what can he do to help? He said, I've given all the information I've just given you now. He decided that he would go and contact Lee Jardine, and I don't know how he did it, but I got the impression that he was going into Allendale House to speak to him. Shortly after that happened, our clerk got the email I've just read out. So that's how we got the response of Mr Jardine. Now, to be fair to Mr Jardine, I believe he stole the car, he's quite willing to go to Speightre and discuss this matter with us, and to help us to move it forward. And I believe, I don't know if that has happened as yet, but I don't believe that would happen until after the fourth of May, which is right, because that was the date of the election. But not one councillor, not one councillor had any communication from these people about this election. I definitely didn't, I definitely didn't. And he also pointed out that it wasn't just an election for the councillors to get re-employers, councillors or put it back in, to reelect it in that position, but it was also for all the other people of the town, okay? And it says, but he said, we've tried to contact, I said, how many people of the town did you try to contact? Oh, I said, that is no responsibility. I said, look, how does the people of the town be aware of this actual election? He says, it all must go on the Cumberman Council website and you can read all about it. Now, how many people from this town are gonna do that? Because we have fifteen seats and we've got at least, we've got five vacancies, and we've tried to fill them five vacancies for months. Yes, we've had a couple leave or whatever, a couple come on, but the number of times we've asked people to put themselves forwards to be councillors, and nobody, or basically nobody, is interested. So the point is that when this new election is actually put forward, I know I haven't got a crystal ball, but I'll tell you what, I would actually pass out if we got more than fifteen nominations. I would actually pass out because I don't think there's a chance at all that would happen. Now, is anybody else wish...
I don't think any of us are expecting that to happen. That's why, what he's basically saying, it's just a simple thing to just wait.
Yes.
And then, this has happened before, we are not the only council with this mandate, so...
It looks like...
It's just, we don't want them to make a big thing, so nothing, basically, we should just have...
It's why your man really, but also to, you know, you feel the change of address.
It's a perfect storm, Allendale, right, and then Allendale to the wrong address. It's a perfect storm.
I'm interested in the right way, and the law that said, you know, what we're gonna do to move forward, so I've been dealing with it for like two weeks.
It seemingly, that there is a legality where if you get nobody at all nominating for an election, there has, there can be at least one, possibly two new elections. And this guy, Mr Jardine, is following the rule to the letter of the law that for the May, theoretically, this council no longer exists, okay? But within the period of time stated on this email, that an election can happen, all the existing councillors, if they wish to, can reapply, and anybody else in the town can apply. And if we don't get any more than fifteen, fifteen nominations, all councillors, probably the people sitting around this table who probably will fill in these forms to be nominated, council, basically, yes.
If we get more than fifty, what happens?
There's got to be an election. There's got to be an election.
And will that cost us money, or something?
Yes, yes.
And as you say, you know, it could be fifteen, as I say, I brought a letter from a man today that wants to think, Karen sent us a couple, we're supposed to come tonight.
The family's bringing stairs, the Speightre has no councillors, but might have still a little bit of interest, to be honest.
It might all be over, but at the end of the day, at the end of the day, this council, this council still exists. As it is now.
The forms you just filed, I actually thought my name was... No, no, I just, that's my question. That was my question, but I actually thought it was based on a nomination.
I think it goes along.
Yes, I know.
And that makes a nun avoid. Mr Jardine says...
Okay, so they, you said the fourth of May.
That's the day, that's...
But anyway, I just wanted to know what they were...
Now, Mr Jardine is gonna supply to anyone in this town who wishes a nomination form for the new election. No forms and no...
Can I just ask if anyone's got the election and cards?
No.
No, no? So when I'll give them? On the next Thursday, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
So now, then, just if then, um, we may put this Mr whatever, Jardine, to fill this form.
He's gonna come and do a briefing to show, half an hour, so he's gonna let me know, and then we'll allow everybody to know, yeah.
Well, I honestly thought, I honestly thought, Mr Jardine probably contacted us very soon after the fourth of May.
Maybe.
Because the fourth of May is the cut-off day, and then we're into the ticking top of... Ticking clock of thirty-five days, so I think soon he comes through. From our point of view and probably his point of view, the sooner he comes, the better. And then we get this started, Alan, and at the end of the day, it's just blown up of all proportions for the simple reason that the forms went to the wrong address, and this council, as the councillors and the clerk, we've never had any contact at all from, as it was then, Allendale Council.
It's all about you and our laws, yeah?
Okay, can I call this meeting through?